Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is now six P M. The regular meeting of the city council of Trinada will now come order. With everybody in the house that has a hat on, please remove your hats, please. Thank you. Please rise for the applicable leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call, please?
DeBono.
Here.
Griego.
Here.
Ogutri.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here.
First time we have asked you on board. And I'm going to have a proclamation to read for the Herrera family. Is there someone from the Herrera family that is here? Could you please come forward? Thank you for being here, by the way. And who and who are you?
I'm Carmen, his sister, and this is Fernando.
Carmen, thank you for being here. Office of the mayor proclamation Trinidad, Colorado. In loving memory of Bob Herrera, November the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas Bob Herrera, a beloved member of the Phillips Broadcasting family, passed away on November the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. He was a dedicated employee for an impressive thirty-six years, leaving an indelible mark on a radio station in the community of Trinidad, Colorado. Bob's journey was not without its challenges, as he valiantly fought cancer for eighteen months, showing immense strength and resilience throughout his battle. And whereas born and raised in Trinidad, Bob was not only a proud veteran, but also the heart and the soul of the town. His warm and compassionate nature touched the lives of everyone he encountered. Known for his sweet disposition and genuine kindness, Bob had an extraordinary ability to make friends wherever he went. And whereas Bob's career at Phillips Broadcasting was a testament to his unwavering commitment and passion for the radio industry. Throughout his thirty-six years of service, he played an integral role in shaping the station's success, leaving an enduring legacy that will be cherished by his colleagues and listeners alike. And whereas beyond his professional achievements, Bob's dedication to his community was unparalleled. He selflessly volunteered his time and resources to various causes. And now he's striving to make Trinidad a better place for all. His impact extended far beyond the airwaves, as he touched the lives of countless individuals through his acts of kindness and generosity. And whereas Bob Herrera will be deeply missed by his family, friends, and the entire community. His memory will live forever. He cherished as a beacon of love, strength, and compassion. Though he may no longer be with us, his spirit will continue to inspire, inspire us, inspire and uplift those who were fortunate enough to have known him. Now therefore, I Philip T. Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby extend our condolences in loving memory of Bob Herrera, upon his passing on November the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, to his family and many friends. In witness wherein too, I have sent here and to set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed. Mayor Philip T. Rico, November the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Copy of the proclamation for your panel. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivera.
Our deepest condolences from the entire staff and the city council. Thank you. Another, they've requested that if we can get an extra copy to put it, we want to keep it at the radio station. Okay, good. Approval of the agenda council having changed that they would like to. I'll entertain a motion. A motion, your second.
Second.
Call the vote.
DeBono.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Ogutri.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Policy items and staff reports. Mr. Rupert, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, not today.
Okay. Petitions or communications are all within. Do you have anybody signed up?
You cannot.
No, I don't. Okay. Consent agenda approval of the regular meeting minutes of November the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Special meeting in the minutes of November the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and November the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Approval of the bills in the amount of eight hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Approval of the payroll through November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, through December the eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, the amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-four cents. Entertained a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Ogutri.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item six, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance appropriating certain amounts of money out of the revenue of the city of Trinidad, Colorado to defray and meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for fiscal year between January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four. Said ordinance being termed the annual appropriation bill for the two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year. Second meeting in the ordinance to be heard on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Hearing is now open. Cheryl.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight is our public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-four budget. We have postponed the final adoption of the budget until December nineteenth due to the special legislative session called by the governor. That will affect our property taxes. We just don't know how much. Hopefully that'll buy us a little time so that we can build in, which is an anticipated decrease to property tax revenue for general fund in two thousand and twenty-four. There have been a few changes to this, the budget for the second reading, but we'll address those at the second reading. And are there any questions?
I guess the, what is the, I didn't provide it down, but what is the dollar comp that we're looking at at this point?
It remains the same as the first reading. We're still at seventy-three million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And that does include the, the raise grant, which I'm pretty sure I put in here at eighteen million.
Council, do you have any questions for?
I have a question. It's an FYI question. So on the capital products, projects, when we were talking about it in one of our initial meetings, you, we had mentioned there was half a million dollars in there for Simpson's risk. How hard is that to change? A line item like that from one specific capital improvement fund to another?
We just would reallocate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just was wondering because there's other, you know, we might have other.
Oh, yes.
Needs for that.
We would reallocate it. We can reallocate it during next fiscal year if necessary, depending on what projects come forward and what not. We would just amend the budget.
All right. Thank you.
So given what's going on with Noah's Ark, are we looking at needing to amend the budget once we figure out the city's role and all of that?
So we have fudged it a hundred and thirty-two thousand for Noah's Ark prior to all this situation arising. City manager recommended keeping that one hundred thousand in there because we may have to move forward and handle. Right.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll speak on that. But that hundred and thirty-two that we had allocated for Noah's Ark, I want to leave that in the budget for animal services as a general line item to help us with the transition for whatever we need to, to do to maintain continuity of operations.
But we really won't know until we get into next year.
Right. But the good news is that we do have money allocated of a sizable amount to really help us. And I will talk in my manager's report about some of the updates on what we're working on with Noah's Ark as well.
Okay. Thank you. The bad news, if we have to decrease our property taxes, that may, that may be the line item we're taking it from, which we would have to probably backfill with marijuana need, which just depends on how much property taxes are decreased. That's our flexible line item right now. Thank you.
Name it.
It's not that bad of news. I mean, you know, long as we can keep it afloat and wait till they figure out how to do certain projects and things for the next year.
So obviously, a city, a city operates just like a business, right? We have money coming in and money going out, and we need to stay solvent. And families, businesses, government entities are facing more and more challenges, rising costs of goods and services. I'd like, if you can, if you don't mind, to just speak, and not in depth, but just briefly, the places that we source funds from, that we get revenue from, and how, how that looks next year versus this year we're leaving.
So I'm going to speak on behalf of general fund. If we need to talk about utilities, we could talk about that afterwards. But general fund revenues are derived from property tax, sales tax, and motor vehicle tax, marijuana sales tax. We also do licensing and permitting where we collect fees for business licenses, contractors licenses, marijuana and liquor licenses. Then we have our intergovernmental revenue. That would be severance tax, highway user tax fund, just designated taxes from the state, as well as federal and state grants. And then we also receive revenue for charges for services. So the swimming pool, recreation at community center, development fees, plan review fees, dispatching community services, or dispatch communication services, which we pay for to operate dispatch. And then we bill the county for a portion of that. We also receive money from E nine one one and building point assessments. We have fines and forfeitures, which comes from county court and county court. And finally miscellaneous revenue, like interest income. The mineral, mineral pieces, whenever we sell fleet. If we were to have sale of land, it would all be itemized in those revenue funds. Impact from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, property taxes, we decreased the budget by five hundred and twenty-five thousand or four and a half percent. Licensing and permitting, licensing and permitting also decreased by twenty-one thousand or ten percent. And then intergovernmental revenue has been decreased by two hundred and seventy-eight thousand or twenty-three percent. And that's attributable to the brownfields revenue grant. We've collected enough. We haven't been awarded any more grants. So we're just finishing up that grant and recognizing revenue that's remaining under that grant. Our fees or charges for services have also been decreased by nine percent or thirty-nine thousand. However, when you look at the budget, it looks like they've increased, but that's because we've increased by six hundred and fifty-four thousand for the landfill since it's been moved back into the general fund. Miscellaneous revenue, there's a little bit of an increase of fourteen thousand dollars or three percent. But overall, the revenue decrease for, from, for two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four is about eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars or five point five percent. And that's just based on the trends of sales tax now decreasing several of those line items.
Thank, thank you. I mean, I think it really does do, it highlights the challenges that we as a council, you as staff, and all of us are going to face. It's a really challenging environment to operate in. Plus, we have the unknowns of heading into an environment where the cost of goods and services, a lot of them are still riding, not leveling off. So I appreciate that, Ben.
Cheryl, the question I have is on the property taxes.
Yes.
What is the amount of, what is the amount of property taxes of we received this year?
We were anticipating to receive one point one. Well, I take it back. It's one point three. Almost, yeah, one point three.
For two thousand and twenty-four, right?
Yes. We're anticipating.
Now, that amount, is that an increase or a decrease from two thousand and twenty-two?
It's a little bit of an increase, about eight thousand dollars.
About eight thousand dollars. And the reason why I ask this question is because you were talking about there might be a decrease in property taxes. However, if you look at your assessment versus my assessment, increased by over a hundred thousand dollars in my house. Now, if that assessment is up a hundred thousand dollars and whatever it is, but then they're going to decrease it by sixty thousand dollars, let's say, is I think that's what they're talking about. That is why I think they're, they're on the right here. Isn't that actually an increase to what we currently, going into two thousand and twenty-five? That's the.
So, yeah.
Working with the math.
Working with the assessor, she just emailed and told us to anticipate a decrease. It won't be as significant had H H passed. It was called H H.
Yeah.
If H H had passed, we would have had to cut our budget by two hundred and ninety, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So she's saying that we won't have to decrease it as much. I'm hoping a hundred thousand or less. But I can't. I would mean, there's no way that I can calculate. She has a formula that, it's all up to her to let us know.
And they will be able to stay what they're doing with it yet because they're still, they're still talking about it.
Yeah, they ask the voters and then do what they want to anyway. So we'll see what that.
Any other questions?
No, sir. No, sir. Okay.
Anyone in-house wants or listening in wants to speak for or against the ordinance? Consideration. Are you not? Here is our close. Thank you. Item seven, unfinished business. Hunter, do I need to take a vote on that?
No.
I do think so. Okay, thank you. Item seven, unfinished business, or is none? Item eight, miscellaneous business, i.e. extra territorial three-quarter inch water tap request at McWhitty and Jocelyn Topol at fifteen, three thirty-five, State Highway twelve. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are the toples here tonight?
Yes.
Come on, come forward, please. If there's any questions.
Mayor.
Linda?
Um, there's a typo. They are actually requesting a one-inch extraterritorial, extraterritorial water tap.
It said it in the communication.
It was a typo on my end.
Okay. I missed that. So that extraterritorial tap is instead of three-quarter inches, a one-inch water tap request?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. So Linda, why don't you go ahead and give us some information on that?
Okay, before you, you have the information for a request for a one-inch extraterritorial water tap from William and Jocelyn Topol at one five three three five State Highway twelve. Both, all the paperwork has been submitted to us. The tap being requested is to service a new residence at that address. Upon your approval, the toples would be paying a total of eleven thousand sixty-one, which includes the private asset fee, water rights acquisition fee, tap fee, and all the meter components. And they are aware of the cost and are wanting to move forward with the cap.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
No. Good afternoon. I'm Bill Topol. This is my wife, Joy. We appreciate the city council addressing this, and we've worked personally with both Mark and Linda. And so hopefully all our ducks are in a row. And if there are any questions I can answer, just please.
Okay, questions from council?
No. In the background information, it says required to pay ten thousand nine sixty-one for now.
Yeah, I mean, it's because of.
Because of the.
Tap fee.
Tap fee.
No, no questions.
So you haven't had a tap at this, yes?
I'm hard of hearing. I apologize.
You have not had a tap at this location?
No, no. And I, and I apologize. I'm hard of hearing, but I think Linda, when I looked at the paper, it said three-quarter inch, but it, we did a one inch.
No, no.
Was that, was that clarified?
It's in the, it's in the middle.
Thank you.
Frank, any questions?
No, yeah.
I, I just had a question for Linda. Is, isn't it typical that we do a three-quarter inch for a residential? And, and is there any need to create, to have some justification for a one-inch line?
Typically, three-quarter inch, one inch is residential. A lot of times customers, if their service line is going to be a little bit longer than normal, a one-inch just provides them a little bit more volume of water. Of course, pressure remains the same whether it's three-quarter inch or one inch. So, but we do have some one-inch residential water tap.
Okay. That was mildly concerned. Thank you.
And I think, Mr. Topol, from the highway to your property, it's quite a distance down the hill.
Correct.
That's probably the reason why.
Okay.
And in speaking with Tony Torta Reese, the plumber, he's the one that suggested that because of the distance and stuff. He said, in the long run, we'd be better off.
It makes sense. Thank you.
So, thank you.
It is quite a distance to itself. Name it.
No, I don't have it. I have a question for Linda. Linda, you may or may not know this. I, I only am aware of this because where I work, we have a water tap off of that being there. And I know because of that, that the pressure can fluctuate quite a bit due to the elevation that has come, the elevation changes coming down Highway twelve. I was curious, when, when we have water taps off of that, do we require customers to have a pressure regulator? I mean, is that addressed at all? And if not, should it be?
So it does, it depends on the location. We do have regulating stations along Highway twelve to reduce the pressure coming to town. So it just more or less depends on the location of the water tap and whether they, whether the water department seems, or deems it's necessary for.
Okay. I was curious of that. I don't have further questions, Mr. Mayor.
And in kind of answer, one of the things is where they live. I don't, you know where he lives?
I don't.
Anyway, he lives, I know where he lives. And it's pretty much a, a low-gravity bed. It's pretty steep.
Yeah. But that's where it can change so pretty long.
Fluctuate quite a bit. I don't have any questions, but thank you for the application. And if there are any further questions? Call the vote, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Ogutri.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
It's a good thing, yes, we got yeses.
Got the yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Really appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Item eight, B, consideration of an RFP submission for the obligatory river vision preliminary design. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And a discussion. Jared, is Jared here?
No, he's at a Christmas play in Radcliffe.
That's not.
Mr. Mayor, I have a good recovery for Jared. There's any questions?
He's the ghost of Christmas present.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Jared's lucky to have a life.
Certainly.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so we submitted our RFP for the river visioning, which we've been working on, you know, as you all know, for a while with the Greenway Foundation. Jeff Schumaker is no longer part of the Greenway Foundation, so they're really not an organization that's going to be able to provide the design services we need. So we went up to RFP, and we received one proposal from the Architerra Group. It came in a little under than what we were expecting, as you'll see in your packet, right below six hundred thousand. So it's, it's in line with what we had anticipated, and we recommend awarding the contract to Architerra. You've, you've heard from Dean before, who would be the project manager we would work with. And we feel very strongly this is a good solution for continuity of operations and dovetailing on to work that's already been done. So I'll answer any questions you all have, but we're excited to bring this forward. One last point, just for the public record. We have already committed funds in our Riverwalk project budget, close to a million dollars. So this is well below the, the funds we have, and that leaves some money available to do some other projects and really help out the river, making it terrific.
Questions?
No questions. It's been four years we've been working on this project. I'm happy to see it move forward.
I just had a couple. Is this the, the plan that they presented back in May? Is the one that we're effectuating with this?
Essentially, yeah. But during the design phase, certainly there'll be room for tweaks, improvements, more conversations, community involvement. And so this is still conceptual at this point, but the full design will, will get us to the point where we can actually construct the Riverwalk.
And Jeff Schumaker, as a part of M S H, is going to still be involved with regard to assisting us in getting funding and implementing this, et cetera?
That's correct. So M S H and Jeff Schumaker are subcontractor as part of this contract. They were included in the proposal. So we will still be blessed or cursed with Jeff's presence.
Sorry. Thank you. That's all.
When will these plans come out to us? That's a good question. I don't know anticipated how long it'll take for the actual construction documents designed to take place. There's, there's a lot of work that's involved in this. This is a significant project. But we will, we will get that timeline to the council as soon as we begin working with them and get the contract executed.
I think it did say a timeline for the, in, in all the documents that we received. And I think it was later in the fall of, of twenty-four.
That sounds right, Mayor. Yeah. But we'll fine-tune that timeline and make sure we're communicative about that. So basically, six hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. So I wanted to make sure that six hundred thousand dollars is actually, I mean, the, the portion of one million that's already been committed to this project. Yes, sir. And just so you all know, the, the total construction, just preliminarily, is anticipated in the fourteen million dollar range for all the bells and whistles, all the amenities. So generally, you want the design to be ten percent or less of the construction budget, and we're well within those parameters. So the, the other question that I have is, we're putting a lot of hope in this, right? Like, because we're really counting on the Centennial Grant to do this work? At least that's my understanding. That's certainly one option. However, we'll explore every, every funding option available. It may be a hybrid of multiple sources, but we will be very aggressive. However, I, I can certainly attest in our conversations with GOCO and other funders, this is certainly a project that is of note and something that's very interesting to, to people who would be contributing to the construction side of things. So the, the concern, I have a lot of concerns about this, but. Sure. The, the, one of the biggest concerns I have is that it's amazing, you know, if we can put this up on the screen, it's really nice to look at. Yeah. If, if we could overnight make it appear, If, if we could overnight make it appear, it's going to be a huge benefit for the citizens of Trinidad. It's going, I can't imagine it not being a regional draw for people. It's going to give us opportunity to have events, all sorts of opportunity. But, um, what I think is important is that we really, from the beginning, plan on something that is not only functional for our residents, but adds quality of life for our residents. Yeah. Um, and is maintained well for our residents. Um, so something that I, I think is important to note is, um, you know, our Riverwalk Trail right now, the, the belief is, and probably reality is, um, it's not really usable for a lot of people. So I think we really need to, as a council, as a city, um, really strive to, um, to commit to the, the homeless coalition and, and make some progress there so that we don't have this being used as a campground and so that it's maintained. I'm really happy that we're going to do it. I support it, but I just really want to make sure that we do that. I mean, and there's a lot of work ahead to make sure. I just, I, I want on record that we really, really want to see it maintained well for, for the citizens and then reap the benefit going out. And one last thing. Um, you know, I was talking to a former council member this morning, and I'm sure, um, Mr. Rico for sure, Mayor Rico, will remember, I would think, when just Space Degree was in its infancy. And, you know, a lot of people had a lot of negative things to say about that. But it is turning out to be a real boon for the community. I mean, the Smithsonian exhibit, all of those things. So I would just say to the public, um, to us, let's keep our eye on the prizes and move forward. Because, you know, looking to the end goal, that, that's where we want to see. Mr. Mayor, if I can make one comment on that, um, you're, you're spot on. Uh, one of my priorities as city manager is, let's get out of the habit of building projects that we can't maintain. Um, so I, I just wanted to give a special thank you to the council for your, your boldness on amending our lodging tax ordinance last spring. That, um, even though we didn't get our increase passed, there still is a pot of money there that goes directly to quality of life and, and maintaining recreational facilities. So we do have, um, some new money that we can put into maintaining these types of amendments. So thank you for that.
You know, that, uh, one thing that maybe I've been talking about for the past eight years is in quality of life, which is, this is part of it. And, um, I also mentioned way back when, nothing ventured, basically, nothing gained. Uh, look what happened with the Space Degree project. Look what happened with Fishers Peak. Those are some risks that we took, uh, that paid off, and I believe that this has the same possibilities going forward. We know it's going to be a multi-year project. It's not going to be a one- or two-year project. Uh, we do know that, like you mentioned, um, there's a lot of interest from GOCO. Uh, they were here about a year and a half ago. And they, Jackie, who is the director now, uh, was very interested in working with us. And she also mentioned not only is the Centennial Grant available, but like you said, there are other grants available, and there might be some other things we sign, but not this GOCO. So I, I, I think this is a, uh, an opportunity. What it's going to create, and I keep looking at this, I've been saying this about the last year, is that basically what it does, when this is all said and done, maybe even three-quarters of the way done, it's going to create a trifecta for recreation in our community, which is the River Bottom, Fishers Peak, and Trinidad Lake. So we will have a big recreational area and different types of opportunities. A river, a mountain, a lake. So you really look at it in that aspect, it really does make sense that we've really tried to, and, and I agree with everybody here that's saying that, uh, it needs to be maintained and maintained well. But I really believe that this is something that, uh, we really need to, to work on over the next several years.
And Mayor, just for the benefit of the, the public, um, we do have large renderings of the conceptual design available over at Space Degree. So right as you walk into the main garage door to your right on the glass area, if you want to take a look at what's proposed, you can see it right there.
Yeah. And like you said, there, there's going to be some tweaks as, you know, as this plan proceeds. But, uh, I'm, I'm excited to see it. I won't be part on the dais at this time or that time, but, uh, I'm excited to see what happens.
Never seen the effort.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Frankly. All right, I was just going to ask, uh, we have represented the Purgatory River Field.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments on this?
Um...
Come on.
Did you want me to come up?
Yes, yes, if you would.
Julie Knudsen with the Purgatory Watershed Partnership. I, I am excited to see this design. Um, I think it's great. I, I think there are certain hotspots like Chimeno Park that will probably be more supported by the community if you were to pick certain parts of this plan to activate sooner than others. And I think we, all of us who are in the grant world know that you can't just automatically get all the money to do things. So that might be something worth explaining to people, that you would develop, once the full design is done, that you would develop maybe in pieces.
Right.
And, you know, I, I think that Chimeno Park area might be a priority number one, um, that a lot of people would be excited about.
You're correct. As a matter of fact, uh, the last presentation that they made.
Yeah.
That was my request, that we take a look at this in phases.
Yeah.
So that council can swallow it a lot easier. But you're right, and I, I think that's what has to be done.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, and I was just going to say too, is that I think, as some of you know, so this plan really, and for the public, this plan really focuses on the riverbanks out and not on the water. Um, and, and PWP and a lot of the partners are working on the in-stream piece. Um, and as you probably know, we just got that two-point-four million dollar grant to install Fish and Boat Passage in where the diversion dam is. They're at Club Fourteen. And we really look forward to collaborating, um, with these new cons, with the consultants. So I think that would be our ask to city council, is that you require the consultants to join our huge collaborative community that have been working so hard on the river. So that when we're doing, because we're going to go to the public to do final design for Fish and Boat Passage to make sure that everyone's really excited about it and it's fully serving everyone. So we'd love to have fully collaborative conversations about what's happening up on the banks.
Well, I think that's essential.
Exactly. Yeah, so I agree. I, I fully support this.
And one thing I would ask is that, uh, you know, the number of in-person meetings in their disposal.
Yeah.
And was very limited.
Yeah.
And I think for the amount of money, I think they should be able to be here a little more. I think that's fair, Mayor.
I do think I'm hearing that from the community for, for all of these efforts, is they feel like sometimes these things happen in a vacuum and people would like to be able to weigh in.
They'd like to be here.
Yeah, and ask questions.
True.
And we all know the gossip train, so it's better to be able to talk, talk to the consultants directly. Make their questions answered.
And in addition to that, like I said, for the dollar amount, I think there should be no additional cost.
Sure. I agree, Mayor. Okay. I have a few questions, if I may, Mayor. Um, it, it somewhat relates to, uh, what you've mentioned. Um, it would be nice to see that collaboration exist, uh, and, and more meetings. And that was the question I was going to ask about public input. But, um, is the contract already, uh, complete or, or, and if not, how, how do we put in the teeth, so to speak, to cause that collaboration that Julie was speaking of? I mean, is that something that you can still do? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we haven't obviously signed the contract until you all approve this, so we'll take feedback that we're hearing tonight and make sure we incorporate that into the final contract. Okay. And then the, um, this is not a question, but again, I just, um, want to take the opportunity, especially for the public. I mean, there's been a lot of talk about grants recently, that, uh, grants that we've either missed out on or not taken advantage of. But I really do want to assure the public, um, that we do look at grants when and where possible. And I think this really highlights the fact, because there is, in Southern Colorado, there is other, uh, cities of, of our size that have excluded themselves from being able to receive GOCO grants. So it's important to select the grants you pursue, both for matching fund reasons and administrative, uh, support reasons, so you don't rule yourself ineligible. So I think it's good use of grant money and pursuing that. So thank you for what you're doing.
Well, the other part of that too is, you know, we have, uh, talked about one of the economic benefits for the future that we're going to have is to recreation.
Yeah.
You know, and I think focusing on recreation is really important, and this is probably a part of that. This is a major component of that. I feel that's, it's necessary, moving in that direction.
Yeah. Is this submitted to the, um, people doing the, um, strategic plan? It will be, yeah. And they've already seen the visioning, um, that side of things, but we'll make sure that they're informed, uh, as to the next steps of the process. Okay.
May I clarify something, in, for myself, as for everybody else? So it is my assumption that Commercial Street West to Animal Street is going to be our project. You're talking about, your project would be Commercial Street East, correct? Or am I wrong?
Um, so I...
You're... Because I thought...
No, I think it goes to Linden on the plan.
Well, you said that, but there were other discussions that we had that...
Mr. Mayor, and, and council member, I can probably help with that. So, um, we're prioritizing the design of Commercial, I-25. However, the entire project encompasses all the way to Linden and maybe even beyond that. Um, what, what Julie's talking about is in the water, a boat passage thing that's separate from, from the design of the banks to the river that we're working on.
Well, you know, just, uh, the, uh, the area, like I said, from Commercial Street up to I-25.
Yeah.
That is the major area, the, the major area of concentration.
And Julie's right, um, we, we totally agree. Chimeno Park, um, not just from an amenity from a, a Riverwalk standpoint, but from activating downtown and providing space, that's something we really want to work on hard. Um, we're already in conversations with the Catholic, uh, Church about, um, maybe acquiring the foot, the, I guess it's a football field, soccer field.
Do we have the church more?
Yeah. But, so, there's a lot of work, notwithstanding this contract, that's going on behind the scenes. Um, Julie's been very gracious. Uh, we, we established a collaborative group to talk about river efforts in general, just so that we're all keeping in touch. Those have been a little hit and miss lately, but especially as we get into this design, those are something I want to keep going, so that we always have the opportunity on at least a monthly basis to come together and talk about joint efforts.
Yeah, I'd like to, that collaboration, I think, is going to be critical.
Yeah.
So it's, yes, and, and anyone who knows me knows I'm always beating the collaboration drum, uh, because we do get so much more done when we work together.
Right.
And people have cool ideas, and I just, I can't thank the city enough for, the city has been writing support letters for our grant applications and putting cash match in. We've been working with the hotel group, with U.S. National Wildlife Service, CPW, Army Corps, all of these partners and community members to really design this larger project. There's different pieces. The concept plan you see is the out-of-river piece. But, you know, we're working on the in-river piece, and we really want all of this to work together very well. So we are excited to have all the out, people that are excited about the out of the river come weigh in on the in-river and vice versa, because to make this grant, we need all these pieces to work well together and, and not have anything designed in a silo.
By the way, that diversion dam completion looks really nice.
Thank, thank you very much. Yes. And, and as people know, agriculture is a big part of our community, and the irrigators like their diversion dam. And so this project that we're talking about came out of that, that the irrigators needed restoration work down on the dam. But we're also hearing from everyone that they wanted fish to be able to get up to the, the higher-quality habitat upstream. And the inner tubers and kayaks wanted to be able to get safely over the diversion dam. Because as you may or may not know, there's a big push in the state to raise awareness about the safety related to low-head diversion dams. So in talking with many, many people, it was decided, let's get boaters safely down and over, and let's get fish up. And if folks want to talk about a kayak park or something like that somewhere else that makes more sense, because you certainly don't want to be retrofitting a low-head diversion dam for a kayak park, so, and we have a, a long river. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, are there no further questions? Call them up, please.
Tabono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Council reports. I have no council report, other than thank you for the interview.
I hope council will indulge me for just a second. Um, or two or three. I was part of the NOAA SARC board. I resigned because of my position that I will have with, um, the city at the first of the year, but, uh, on social media, there's been a lot of ire against NOAA SARC about that hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we took, and there's a timeline. And it's not, you, you talk about ironic. We were here on a Monday asking for money, and it was not only till the end of the year. It was probably, it was going to help us through biggest part of the first quarter, okay? The next day, Pat Foot came in, uh, did, did a report, and, and there were violations. NOAA SARC, instead of fighting it, knowing that we're taking, um, we're requiring a lot more money than we used to, decided to, uh, relinquish our, our contract with the city. With that, rec, uh, with, with us not keeping that contract, we relinquished whatever we had as far as our, uh, investment in NOAA SARC, which at the time when we first built the shelter, was three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. So, and I just want, there's the keyboard warriors that pay hot and heavy about that hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. What we're going to do is we are going to, it's, I say we, but it's, I'm not part of the organization. But I feel that I have an obligation for the people that have worked in that organization, some of us for twenty-some years, to let you know that we are good stewards of public money, that any money that we don't use, um, by December thirty-first, will be given back to the city. We're not keeping that money. For instance, we had to buy a washer and dryer about three weeks ago that was five thousand dollars. So it's just necessities like that. And I, I really hope, you know, the Shelter has taken care of animals for, gosh, about twenty-six, twenty-seven years. And can you imagine how much that organization has saved this community with taking care of animals through grants, volunteers, and things like that? But NOAA SARC, uh, published a, an official statement, and with, with your permission, I would like to read this. It is part of an official record. If, with the heavy heart, let's see. It is with the heavy heart that NOAA SARC Animal Welfare Association announces the organization will no longer manage shelter operations in Trinidad effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. This was, decision was based upon a perfect storm of steeply, steeply rising costs, food, vet medical care, fuel, wages, declining donations, and a crushing load of regulations. In addition, due to inflation, many cannot afford the ca, the costs of adoption and support of a pet, or cannot sustain the costs of care for a pet that all, they already have. We have a dedicated staff who loves the animals dearly, and a handful of board members and volunteers who have contributed hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars in an effort to sustain shelter operations. With, uh, expenses in two, twenty-three exceeding six hundred thousand dollars, we cannot continue in this capacity despite our best efforts. Even though NOAA SARC will separate from shelter operations, we will continue as an organization. The NOAA SARC Thrift Store will continue to operate with proceeds funding a number of animal services in our area. For instance, spaying neuter vaccination clinics, emergency surgery, treatment support, education, that's a big one for this community, lost pet search and rescue, and sporting stricter ordinances affecting pet ownership. If anyone, anyone would like to join us in our future endeavors, please contact NOAA SARC Thrift Store with your information. Thank you, and this for me personally too. Thank you to everyone who has supported us throughout the years. We are deeply grateful. And I want to tell you, I have never, will never be ashamed of being part of that organization. They've done a wonderful job in twenty-seven years. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. No, I don't have any, of course, I have a, I have a meeting on Thursday. So we'll be going over their budget and everything.
our budget and everything.
Will you have a poll report for us?
Absolutely. I don't know what we'll report on, but we'll get it done.
I had the pleasure of attending the Destination Blueprint meeting today about tourism, and it was just a really well-attended, there had to be 100 people there, and they were from all parts, all segments of hospitality industry, arts, recreation, historical preservation, business community. Steven others gave an update on what's going on in Trinidad. And it was just a really good listening and learning session, I think, about how to get people off of that highway and onto our streets, so that they can experience everything that's happening in Trinidad, and, but also do it in a way that is sustainable for the people living there. So all of that was part of the discussion. It was really well-done. Good job, Marty Hackett, and everyone from the city who's involved. They had, there's a tourism study that's out on, I think it's on our website, or maybe it's on the City of Trinidad, according to the QR code that you can take, give your response to your thoughts on tourism in Trinidad, and it's going to be open, I think, through the end of the year?
Yeah, we're going to leave it open through the end of the year.
Yeah, but it was just really well-done, and I was very proud to be there.
I have no questions, except, well, I have a comment. Patrol Red Sports money, so my pick of Boston World Cup, Red Sports, and golf courses. And they're asking for some money, so, well, we'll talk to the mayor, so, let's see what happens.
So I wanted to just request again, in a work session coming up, hopefully, the bears are still asleep, implementing some sort of bear ordinance for Trinidad. I mean, we can make a big, big difference for the number of bears that they have to put down every year. And I think it will provide a lot of safety concerns for the city of Trinidad, because at some point, we're going to have a really negative interaction of the bear, and it's, you know, if we can prevent that, that will be, that'll be good. I mean, it does not have to be expensive, and there's other model ordinances out there. I'd really like to see a work session for that soon. I know we have a lot. And then, Mr. Rugaral, I believe you're going to be addressing this in your report, so I'll just wait, but I'm curious, with the deadline of Noah's Ark approaching, I'm, you know, I'm sure we're all anxious to see that solution, so just, I know you'll read this on that. Council of Governments is concluding a search to hire an executive director for that. I believe we're taking applications through the 13th, and then we'll make that decision to hire a new executive director, and hopefully that will go well. The other request, I guess, that I have, oh, we also have a final board meeting in the year where we will adopt our budget. That's going to be the 14th for the Council of Governments. Then, I have one more request for a potential work session, collaboration, or maybe update. You know, we have the strategic plan coming up, but I really, really would like to see what we can do together, possibly with the Lodging Tax Advisory Board, to really get people to Trinidad in any numbers possible, but obviously more is better, so that they, one, can experience what we have to offer here, and, two, spend money at small businesses, especially. I think, you know, we really, really need to leverage, and we've all said this before, but we really need to leverage the opening of the Peak Trail. I mean, there's, you know, Colorado is known for having outdoor enthusiasts, a lot of outdoor enthusiasts most likely really enjoy getting to the top of fishery. I think it's one of the key things we can leverage right now. Maybe I'm overstating the importance of that, but I think if we work together, we can collaborate, we can see some good stuff happen. That's everything I have.
Okay. I attended the Smithsonian opening last week, and I'll tell you what, that is really, really nicely done. And of course, it's going to go through, what, January or February, and, I mean, it was neat to see all the photos of the women that were there, and their all colors, and the, you know, the history behind them, and it was interesting just to see those. And like I said, I think everybody has heard that the president was here last week, on last Wednesday, and I got a call from Rene Martinez, who's been represented, asking me if I could go, and I did go. So it was kind of nice to hear the president speak, and actually to come to Colorado. What was interesting about that, and of course, Brian doesn't affect us, maybe, maybe it will, you never know. One thing that did come out that day is that the Lynn Farm out there is going to like triple in size in the next several years. And so it's going to be huge as far as employment and the whole bit, but that was... The Christmas tree lighting, it was a cold night, but it was amazing how many people still showed up. People showed up, and it was, it was nice to see the people that showed up. Just like the parade, there was still, there was good contestants in the parade that night.
You were our AMC?
Yeah, I got called in the last minute. The last thing I had to have is that, a while back, we had a discussion on the Pinon Canyon pipeline, and I think we need to have some more food discussion on that. I think that I received a letter from the, from General Doyle, from Fort Carson, from the country. You guys, you should have received that a few days ago. And also additional information from Kinder Morgan about possibly, an addition to that would be abandoning the pipeline, but they'd be doing the, some information in the desktop, not a page, but a study on it. But, and I'm talking to Luis Lopez, who that is his area down there, we're talking about, you know, I know those concerns why we were doing it, maybe them taking the lead on that. But I think that maybe it'd be a good idea for us to, somebody even mentioned the last time, about possibly having a joint session with the county. And that might be something, right before the meeting, I texted him and asked him if that would be something that they would be interested in doing. So anyway, we're still working on that, trying to get that done. I don't know if we can get it done by the end of the year, but it'd be nice, because the first time we get this information to is retired at the end of the year. So we'll see what we can do. So that is all that I have. Mr. Rugaral, yeah?
Okay, I have a few things until Les hits me. Yeah, right. Fairly quickly, but some important things. First and foremost, these are in no particular order, so don't construe this as, as an order of precedence or anything. I wanted to mention the Lodging Tax Advisory Board met last week to review proposals we received for a marketing and advertising firm to come help our city, and they've selected one. I don't want to mention who it is until we officially make that announcement, but I'm proud to announce that we're going to have a firm that has a strong connection with the tourism office, knows all about Destination Blueprint, and is really going to be an advocate for us. And I think we're going to get some great results with the cohesive campaign for Trinidad. Noah's Ark, I did want to mention a few things about our efforts on our side. So first and foremost is the animals that are currently there. So I want to give a special thanks to Adisa Roth. She's been working tirelessly to get pictures of all the animals, get them posted online. We've already had many adoptions. We're looking at anything we can do to, to make it low cost or no cost for people to get animals. As far as animals who are currently being fostered, we're asking those families if they can hold out for a little longer than maybe they were expecting, and hang on to those animals. But we have a legal obligation on impoundment, so we're working through that process to ensure we have the resources at the current facility to, to meet that obligation. But it's also important to me that we also have some semblance of an emergency shelter option. I think about some little old lady, or a big old lady, whatever size she is, who passes away and leaves an animal, we don't want to just abandon that animal. We've got to take care of our furry friends. So we'll do everything we can to be compassionate for our animals and, and work through this issue. We were successful in talking to the state, as council member Grago mentioned, to have the Noah's Ark license extended through December 31st. That gives us a little bit of time for planning. And I do want to mention, PACFA has been very great to work with. They're offering us a lot of advice and resources, and, and holding our hand through the process. So that's terrific, being void of a lot of local expertise. We're assembling, as we speak, a task force to really get our community involved. Anybody who's interested is welcome to come join the conversation and help us find solutions. I've seen a lot of the stuff that's going around online. The only comment I would make there is, we really can't do much about the past at this point, but I'd like for our community to positively move forward to, to long-term solutions, and all join together and support not only our human friends, but our animal friends as well. So the last thing on Noah's Ark, will codify a lot of our efforts into a public announcement this week and get that out, so the public's aware of what we're doing. I think it's really important. I would have liked to get that out sooner, but there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we want to make sure we're getting accurate information out, but we will commit to doing that this week. Gas rates, I know there's been some questions on that. I wanted to mention to council and the public, we are planning to defer any increases to at least March 1st. And that gets our residents through the winter months before they get hit with a, a gas rate increase. And it also gives staff time to, to work with the consultant and make absolutely sure that we're comfortable with their analysis. We want to do our diligence and make sure that, that everything's correct and that we're moving forward as accurately as possible. So I wanted to mention that. Smithsonian opens this, officially opens this Saturday, so I encourage everyone to go to that. I attended the Podcar Conference, which is, sounds silly, but it's a really big deal. It's an international conference, took place at in San Jose at their city hall, which is an outstanding building, which is our city hall to shame, but ours is historic and more beautiful. But it was a tremendous opportunity to talk about Trinidad. So this is in the context of VUBA's proposal to look at using Trinidad as an option for demonstrating modern transportation technology. I was the first local government person that had ever attended this conference in the last 10 years, and I think it was a benefit to the folks who were there. And we're talking the upper echelon of transportation people. I was on a panel with the, one of the directors of transportation for the Atlanta Airport, the former director of transportation for Las Vegas, Nevada, and the innovation director for San Jose, and their plans to modernize their transportation system. And what I can tell you is, all eyes are on Trinidad in this project, and we have a lot of advocates on our side for success. And so we'll keep working through it, make sure it's a good fit for us. That's what the feasibility study is all about that we're working on right now. And we'll be cautiously optimistic, but, but this could be a very good game changer for Trinidad going forward. And then, last thing I wanted to mention is, we've been talking with all three unions on our budget. As Cheryl mentioned, we're $857,000 down in revenue. I will add to that, plus a $400,000 hit on insurance premiums. So that's a lot. And I wish I could give all of our employees what they deserve, which is, which is more than I can offer them in raises next year. But the compromise is, we're going to be able to give every employee a sizable stipend going into the holiday season, actually a little bit more than we originally thought. So I will get those numbers to you all, but it's not a long-term solution, but it's something, no furloughs, no layoffs, however we are, freezing positions and, and holding off on hiring those positions until they're absolutely necessary. So with that, I do want to thank our staff. That's extra burden, that's extra work on our staff that they have to pick up the slack for by not having those resources. And I can appreciate the hard work that our staff puts in more. I'm just so thrilled with, with the staff we have at the city and how hard they work. So that's all I have, and thank you.
A couple of comments on your report that might interest, that I think the public needs to know, is that I'm really glad to see that you went out to talk about VUBA, and you've been out to talk about other areas, just like I have done in the past eight years. And that's going to be really, really important, moving forward for the, for the next council, to be able to continue to reach out across the state level and every place that you can and can, because that's what makes us known a little bit more. That's, that's really important. And the last thing I wanted to mention on your report, and it's really frustrating, is that whenever something like, you know, the Noah's Ark, you know, the first thing that comes up, and all these people get on their telephones, and the mass multimedia, mass media, and everything is negative, negative, negative. They, I wish that people would just realize that this community is moving in a good direction. There are opportunities out there. We just need to take advantage of them. And I think, you know, we've done that, but I think that the council, future councils will continue to do that. And I think that's really good. I just wish people would understand. But there are limitations, and there are limitations to what we can do. But I think that between the council, and staff, and the volunteers, all doing a nice job that we possibly can for the city of this.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I just want to let you know that we are going to be advertising for applications for the council vacancy that will be, I thought Steve was going to...
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Got it right here.
Something, yeah.
There you go, Les.
Yeah, could he? I got something. Kidding, kidding. But we'll be advertising for applications for that, and we're asking that the deadline, that it's going to be Friday, December 22nd, that applications are in by then. So that is all I have. What's this executive session related? Kidding, kidding. Yeah, right. No, that's all I have. Questions?
On that particular item that you're talking about, are you going to school the council as to what they need to do, of course, with this selection of the filling of the spot?
I agree with Matt. Mr. Mayor, yes. We're going to solicit the applications this year, but that appointment obviously can't be made until after the new council's seated. So yes, we will guide the council through the process and make sure we're transparent about, about everything in, in moving forward.
And what they can and can't do, what they...
Absolutely.
School council, some of that negative connotations, yes.
School you are.
Yeah, that's right.
You can form, I guess, if you'd like.
Yeah, right.
Okay, on to item 11, the executive session for a discussion of the personnel matter in the CRS section 24-6-402, 2F, and not any person to fill an office of this body, or of any elected official or personnel policy that do not require the discussion of matters. Personnel of the particular employees, city attorney, performance review. Motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All roll, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.